Cracking, could I just ask Democratic Services just to outline the housekeeping arrangements for this morning?
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Can I please request that everyone switches the mobile phones to silence so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast the meeting. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission. For example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information, or in the event that a member of the public participates in a meeting, object to it being recorded. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any apologies for absence this morning?
None received sir.
Right, would any members or anyone else in the chamber wish to declare an interest on anything that's on today's agenda? If not, then I've already introduced myself, I am flanked by the members of today's subcommittee. Would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Yes, it's councillor Brian Homsho, councillor for Bromhill and Sherravale.
Councillor Karen McGowan, Birlit Ward.
And you'll see a number of other people sitting around the room who are the officers that are working with us this morning. Would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Good morning, it's Van Conley, Labour Party, under the subcommittee.
Good morning, I'm Jane Gough, I'm licencing here to read the report this morning.
A call in from Democratic Services just hit the minutes.
And could I now just ask the applicants, followed by the interested parties to the responsible authorities, I'll get it right one day, to introduce themselves, and if you could use the microphones because my hearing is not what it was.
Yes, Thomas Harrington, I'm the licensee for the premises applied for the tens.
John Armitage, Detective Sergeant, South Yorkshire Police, as Football Intelligence Unit.
Ian Armitage, South Yorkshire Police, Licensed Enforcement Officer.
Carl Fender, Council for South Yorkshire Police.
I'm Gareth Thomas, Chief Inspector for Operation Policing in Sheffield.
Well, thank you and welcome again, and you all are very welcome this morning. We have a set procedure for these hearings and I will now ask our legal adviser to outline those proceedings please.
Thank you Chair, I think probably all realise that there's not one in the report, so I'm going to wing it from a previous version, so hopefully it's relatively straightforward to follow. Before I do, can I just check everyone's got papers or site of papers that need them? Yeah, fantastic. So what we'll do, the licensing officer who's Jane this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, we'll get those raised there, so if there's anything missing or factually inaccurate, just so we can amend the record. We'll then head over to South Yorkshire Police who have objected to the submission of the temporary event notice. So we'll just ask you to detail your representations to expand on what's written and we've already seen in the report. Members will have an opportunity for questions and with the leave of the Chair, the premises may also ask you questions as well. Once we're finished with that, we'll head over to the premises just to detail why they think the event should go ahead and to respond to anything that South Yorkshire Police have raised, both in writing and verbally at the hearing here today. Again, members can ask you questions and with the leave of the Chair, South Yorkshire Police may also have some questions for you as well. You'll then be given the opportunity to sum up the temporary event notice, just to leave us with any final thoughts before we take the options as detailed in the report from the licensing officer. We'll then go into private session where members can take legal advice and consider the application today. So we'll just ask you to wait inside that room and then we'll invite you back in once we've made the decision, which hopefully shouldn't take too long. The decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and Regulations Made There Under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session as we are now or closed. Again, we'll just ask you to pop next door and then when we invite you back in, we'll feedback what was discussed and what the outcome of that was. And as has already been set out, the hearing is in public this morning and is being live webcast and recorded. And that should be everything, thank you Chair.
Thank you Sam. Could we have the report please Jane?
Certainly can, good morning everyone. Welcome to the hearing to consider the objection to a temporary event notice for the beer engine 17 Cemetery Road in Sheffield. The application was submitted by Mr Thomas Harrington on behalf of the premises, which the licensing service received on the 1st of October. This application is at Appendix A if you'd like to see that. So the event is described to take place on Sunday the 10th of November, requesting earlier opening hours in relation to the Sheffield United and Sheffield Wednesday Derby match, which is due to take place, I believe, 12:30 kick off. Just the location of the event is within the premises itself, so this application is to simply request for earlier opening for the sale of alcohol from 8am to 12pm. And there will be no more than 150 people on the premises at any one time. Representation has been received from South Yorkshire Police, which brings us here today on the 1st of October and is Appendix D if you'd like to see the details of that. I'm just going to scoot through the report to the appeals section. The Licensing Act 2003, Section 181, Schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the premises user and the Chief Officer of Police against the decisions of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. So the recommendations this morning Chair are that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as a committee consider necessary for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you Jane, have members got any questions on the report at all? Do the police have any questions on the report at all?
No sir, thank you.
And does the landlord have any questions on the report?
No.
Then it's over now to you to state your case to us and say, tell us why you think this event shouldn't take place.
Yes, thank you very much. So the reasons behind the objection are in large part, we say justified by the longstanding historic opposition that the fans of the respective clubs have towards each other. Now, the fixture itself hasn't happened since March 2019 because of the fortunes of the different clubs and Covid intervening. So five and a half years have passed since these two clubs played against each other. But as far back as 2013, 2014, I'm told that there was a mass brawl in Sheffield city centre between rival fans of these two clubs. And throughout or since that time, the fans of both teams have essentially carried out, one might say revenge attacks in relation to premises, particularly around the West Street area, so not far from here. So particularly, there was an incident outside the Bessemer Public House in 2013-14. In 2022, there was an attack by one fan of one club on another, which led to a manslaughter trial and conviction. And that was in 2022. And the victim of that manslaughter was a Sheffield Wednesday fan. Now, at the pub itself where that happened, which was the Bessemer pub, Sheffield Wednesday fans still demonstrate outside that pub because of the happening of that event. And so around the West Street area, you see incidents being carried out. And these are often sometime after football matches have happened. So often into the small hours of the following day and also before matches happen as well. So the real fear on behalf of South Yorkshire Police is that this is an opportunity for both clubs who've not played each other for five and a half years, that this is really a catalyst with an extension of drinking hours which is asked for here, which would be four and a half hours before kickoff. That that's effectively an incendiary to what would be the reignition, if you like, of longstanding rivalries between sections of the fans of both of these clubs. Now with me, I've got Detective Sergeant John Armitage, he's the Football Intelligence, so he's given me the information that I've outlined to you today. And so he feels particularly strongly about the very high risks of extending the drinking hours. This match was going to take place on Friday night, so two days earlier, to fit in with football scheduling. And through a strong or very difficult negotiation with the football clubs and with the TV and the Football League, it was eventually moved to half past 12 on the Sunday because of the concerns that South Yorkshire Police have about the timing of a Friday night fixture after work, where people would clearly have an opportunity to drink before the match. So to allow this application, where you've managed to move the game to what was assumed to be a safer time over the weekend, and then to build into this application an opportunity for sections of the fans to start drinking four hours or so before, defeats the object which has been achieved by moving the fixture to half past 12 on a Sunday. The other factor here is that this is Remembrance Sunday as well. So at 11 o'clock, certainly in the late hours of, well before midday that day, there'll be a heightened presence of members of the public coming into the city centre to celebrate that annual event. So near city halls, I understand the main wall memorial is there, at 11 o'clock, there'll be a large number of people, city dignitaries, all attending, probably cadets and armed forces personnel. That's being policed separately by a counter-terrorism team. The relevance of that though is that in the city centre, there will be additional members of the public coming in, so it will be busier than normal at a time when if you were to extend the licensing hours here with the risks of public disorder, that you're going to have the risk to members of the public who are there, who would not otherwise be there because of the event that is happening at the same time on that day. So sir, we submit that the safest thing to do and one which promotes the licensing objectives here of public safety and of crime and disorder is not to allow this application and actually that the beer engine should just operate within its licensing hours that it currently has. So on a Sunday, it would be midday, which is half an hour before kickoff. So those are the observations that I make on behalf of South Yorkshire Police. And I don't know whether any of my colleagues want to make any contribution to open up anything that I've said in the opening so far.
Yeah, sir, one of the suite of measures that we considered was whether or not it would be possible to move the game to a Sunday and whether or not there would be no licensing before kickoff. Because sadly, whilst many of the people here watching this, listening to it or whatever, will go to a football match and will consume football normally, sadly there is an element that relies on alcohol and narcotics to fuel their behaviour around football. So one of the things that was considered was whether or not there would be a carte blanche move to ask that there was no licensed premises open before kickoff. We've not looked at that, it was discussed with the fans groups of both clubs, it's been discussed with the clubs. And essentially, the feeling was that it should be left to run as it is, but with licensing within their existing licensing hours. So there are pubs that will be open and we know that they will be open, but there are less opportunities for people to access alcohol because the problems start pre-match, they go on during the match and then post-match. Unfortunately, we do have incidents that can happen 10, 12, 14 hours after the game's even finished. And it's just about minimising the risk around the people that are attending the fixture. And as I said, the major thing I'd like to get over is that there were considerations about a more draconian request. But actually, it's for people just to operate within the licenses they've got so that we can mitigate the amount of alcohol consumption and hopefully associated violence and disorder.
If I can just jump in there, Mr Chair. I am in the process now of visiting with Football Intel, visiting all the licensed premises round Barker's Pool, up London Road, Bramall Lane, all the area what we see will be affected by early rush of football supporters. There's a letter gone out to each premise outlining our needs and expectations. It is a voluntary letter, but it has been very well received. People understand this, there's certain premises in city centre what's totally refusing football fans because of the Remembrance Day proceedings. And in fact, one licensed premise on Bramall Lane has already withdrawn their 10 for the football match day after we spoke to them and explained the ramifications and what code. And she totally understood our reasonings for asking her to, for us to object to her 10. So there is a feeling between the premises, in the premises that, as Sam just said, we're not being draconian, we're asking for their help and assistance. But I personally, and as you know me Chair, I work with all the premises. And I think really that if we open one, if we allow one 10, we'll allow a floodgate to come in and then it's going to make it harder for the people of Sheffield on that day.
Thank you, happy for me to open this up to questions then now. Brian, do you want to start us off, is there anything you'd like to ask at this stage? Karen, is there anything you'd like to ask?
I don't know where to start. I'll let you know my views, I'm really disappointed that this is happening on Remembrance Sunday. Whoever's idea it was to have it on a Sunday, but that's just my opinion and I've just got to get that out there. What I just, my questions are, have you had any issues with this particular premises previously on football matches and anything? Have, you know, have police been called out or anything?
We have a history of certain away clubs using these premises. Birmingham City in particular spring to mind at the time that it was known as Delaney's Football Bar, or Music Bar rather. We're not specifically saying there are any issues with the individual. And in respect to the first thing that you asked, nobody has asked for it to be on the weekend that it's on. It's been given to the football clubs and vicariously the police and the council as a fait accompli that it will be on that weekend. Unfortunately, fixtures on a Friday night have led to significant disorder and thousands of pounds worth of damage, £250,000 policing bill that the people of South Yorkshire have then got to foot. And therefore, an earlier kickoff mitigates much of that risk. The options available to us sadly are dictated by the AFL, football clubs and Sky TV.
No, I get that, but I just needed to take that opportunity because I feel so strongly about it. That's good to know, can I just ask, am I all right to ask of the premises questions?
They'll be stating their case in a second, so you can ask them.
All right, I'll leave it at that then.
I just, a couple of things from me. I mean firstly, if you are able to, Chair, you may not be able to. Have you picked up any specific intelligence about potential problems on this Sunday?
You're correct, there's nothing I can share with you.
Nobody tells me anything, it's a story of my life. And the other thing, I mean, maybe in a way of common sense, but do early kick-offs work in terms of reducing violence? Is there evidence to suggest that that's the case?
They do, and primarily because there's limited access to alcohol pre-match. 12 o'clock kick-offs tend to be, there are, you will know the premises that are open from 8am where people go for a breakfast and drink. There are minimal numbers of spaces in those venues. It's easier for us to police, it's easier for people to manage. Dare I say, the vast majority of the population don't particularly want to go and drink to excess before midday, where for a 3 o'clock kickoff, they may go to the pub and have a few drinks. For a 7:45 kickoff, they probably will go and have a few drinks. And unfortunately, that is just the way that football matches are run. There is a home office matrix that has a scoring for the time that fixtures kickoff and the lowest scoring is for a lunchtime kickoff.
Thank you, that's helpful. Brian, is there anything that you want to come in with?
Yes, I. Good point, thank you. Yes, so I was just, just had a few points to make and questions to ask, but I just needed to know which order to put them in, so it made sense. So, so specifically for the Bramall Lane area, there are other licensed premises that will be open or not earlier in the day?
There will be some premises that have licensing hours that allow them to open and serve alcohol. In and around the city, there will be some in Hillsborough where people can drink early and then travel across, but those numbers will be limited.
And those are regular hours, not under tens licenses?
No, the premises around Bramall Lane, as it stands at the moment, we've got this objection to the beer engine. The other one was the railway, she's withdrawn her application. We've got another one what's coming on the horizon. But the premises actually on Bramall Lane, they're all sticking to their licensed hours and applying for tens.
Thank you, so what was?
Sorry, I apologise sir. This fixture in particular tends to lead to a lot of fear amongst licensees in and around the city. And as the game becomes closer, people will start to worry about the clientele that they're going to get in. I can say that with certainty because it happens every time. And for every of the previous fixtures, be it at Hillsborough or Bramall Lane, people start to worry about rival fans coming into their pubs. It's part of the reason that we are going down the route of saying, whatever your licensing hours are, that's your licensing hours. So it's not specifically against this gentleman or his venue, it's a carte blanche. Anybody else asking the same questions will receive the same answer from us.
Can I just mention as well around the policing operation side? Obviously, this fixture has already been identified. John has obviously stated the fact that we can't give you the intelligence, but this is probably, well, it will be the biggest policing operation that the force puts on this year alongside the Remembrance Day, because clearly that's an ongoing annual thing. So in terms of police resources, it's a significant impact in relation to the operation and the seriousness that we take it as and the risk assessments and everything that go alongside it. John's mentioned there around the fact that it's not just pre-game and then during the match that the concerns are. That operation will spread right through into the afternoon and into the evening because of historical factors that have taken place whereby, just because the match has finished, we still have rival groups that have the tendency to come together in a location that we potentially will not be aware of and we have to react to that. Clearly by having the lunchtime fixture, it sort of limits in some respects, but actually it prolongs the actual length of that operation. Because if we know we've got a football match at 7:45 on a Friday night or 3 o'clock on a Saturday, we can sort of factor that in. The earlier that we start that operation, it obviously then impacts on our ability to resource. And what we need to remember is, we haven't just got a football operation taking place on that, we've got a Remembrance Day and we're obviously having normal day-to-day incoming demand. I don't have to sit here and tell you as a panel in terms of our stretched resources. So clearly the significance of the earlier that we have these licensed premises opening, it affects our ability to police significantly. We are having to draw resources from all around the country to assist us because there are not enough staff within South Yorkshire Police to service demand on this operation due to the level of risk that comes with it. So I think that's, I want to reassure you, but I also want to sort of give you a bit of an idea and flavour around in reality, how Sunday the 10th would look. We're not just talking about a 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock start for police officers and then they finish when the football match finishes. We have to plan and prepare because ultimately now with the way the sort of city, the night time economy, night time economy isn't just about Friday and Saturday. If we have events like this, there is a likelihood then that people will return to licensed premises throughout the afternoon into the early evening. So we've obviously got to factor in that and ensure that normal people who attend night time economy or pubs in that area are as safe as anybody who's attending the fixture itself.
Yeah, a couple more. So, yes, so tens licenses in the area, I'm thinking about consistency here because we don't want to isolate one particular premise, obviously. So is the plan to refuse all tens licenses from this point on? Is the plan to refuse all the licenses?
Licenses like John said, we found the total closure to be draconian. So we decided to look at the tens alone because then it's extending peoples. And as we're saying to people, it is not directed at any individual. This is the policy that us itself, the Yorkshire Police have taken. So it's not picking on anybody, it's everybody who puts a tens application in will be spoken to, given the options of, yes, you can appeal or you can withdraw, that's your decision.
Thank you. Final thing I wanted to ask was, let me just dig this out. So obviously, there are concerns prior to the match, but also during the match as well. So gathering while the match is on, not attending the match and causing trouble. So could you just identify what the likelihood is of that and how you're going to respond to it?
Yeah, again, this is part and parcel of the suite of measures that are in place. Clearly, the away allocation for this fixture will be significantly smaller than Sheffield Wednesday would otherwise fulfil. It is likely that Sheffield Wednesday fans will drink either in Hillsborough or in the city centre or at their own homes, or even in local pubs as Farfielders, Rotherham and Barnsley. It is likely that that will happen. Sheffield United supporters by and large will be able to access around 29,000, 30,000 tickets. And that will minimise the number of Sheffield United fans that are in the city centre. The issue with this is that it's obviously more than you will see on a match day and it's an ongoing process where we try Has my microphone stopped working here? Okay. We try to eliminate the people who cause trouble at football. And there's an ongoing plan to manage people through club bans, football banning orders, et cetera. Those things will by and large stop people from drinking in the city during the game and not being present in the ground. The club have got a stewarding plan around the ground supported by the police. There is an existing plan to manage the city centre, both separately through the Remembrance Day operation and also through the football operation to manage who is in the pubs during the game and afterwards. But as Chief Inspector has mentioned rightly, it stretches the resources in terms of where we are. And this isn't about what's happening during the match other than minimising access to alcohol. Pre-match, it minimises that, during the match, that should make things a little more comfortable for the club and everybody else involved. And then afterwards, obviously licensing will be as it is until it becomes the night time economy.
Another thing as well councillor, on top of that is, when I'm speaking to the premises, and I've had 100% support from all the premises in Sheffield on this, that if Chief Inspector or Inspector has the premises to close for a couple of hours because potentially of disorder and all this and all that, that every licensee in the city centre will agree to voluntary close and ensure that the safety of the city.
And would, when you say city centre?
I mean city centre and London Road and Bramall Lane area.
Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask, South Yorkshire Police?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I can't multitask. You'd think I would by now, but we are where we are. So you said you've discouraged or almost told other premises not to submit any temporary event notice applications in? Or just where they have, you've encouraged them to withdraw it as opposed to preempting?
What's happening, Sam, is when the application come in from Silver Command, we've been ordered that we will put an objection in straight away.
Alright.
We will speak to the premises and tell them that we are objecting, explain the reasons why. Not just because of the costume, but because of the public safety. And it's an old adage, I say, it's easy to lose a couple of grand behind the bar than it is to refurb the pub. So people, listen, they start pricking their ears up and listening to this and saying, yes, I agree with you, yes, we'll do this. But we also point out the legal rights, that yes, we objected, but you have got the legal right to let the licence subcommittee make that decision and then we will abide by any decision what comes from that. So the premises are well aware.
Thank you. So I'm assuming you've spoken to this particular premises, gone through that process and explained and then...
My colleague Lucy from Office, Lucy Adams, who puts the objections in, she spoke to the premises and it was decided the premises, no, we will go ahead with it. Fine, no problem. But one thing, like I said, I am repeating myself, that one thing we are hammering into the premises, it is not personal.
Yeah. Okay. Was there ever a decision considered to request premises to sort of open later? I know you said a carte blanche, not opening at all, but to sort of maybe consider, like, nobody opening before 11 or midday? Was that part of the process and the risk assessment at all?
It was.
It was. Go on, John.
Yeah, it was and it has been discussed. And the impact that that's likely to have on those people that already have licences, businesses within the city, the fact that there is another operation running, the fact that there will be people coming from all over the town, if not the country, for Remembrance Day. Those premises will be used by other people as well earlier in the day. So it has been considered, it has been looked at and it was decided to run with existing licence, no problem. Anything in exception to that to be challenged.
I think that's everything. That's been really helpful. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any questions for South Yorkshire Police?
Are you going to be questioning me afterwards?
If you've not, or if you've asked questions or you've no questions, you send...
I've been making notes, I've got a couple. So the gentleman in the middle said that the objection was explained. All I was told was that our application was objected to. So it wasn't explained about the ramifications of opening and there being damage to the pub or anything like that. So it was just a phone call that said, no, you can't open. So I haven't had that further advice on what the ramifications are of opening earlier. Now, you know, when you ask me the questions, we have had that venue nine years. So we've had games with Sheffield Wednesday in the past and touch wood, there's never been any problems there. You know, we've had bouncers on the door, we don't promote it on social media. You know, another example is Leeds were able to police a game last Friday between Sheffield United and Leeds United with what I'm aware of, no issues going off. So the other issue is, and I don't want to see other businesses put out of it, is I presume the chief island, which is five minutes around the corner from us, will be allowed to open at 9am. You know, I can't afford to open at 9am, we'll put a licence in for that, but they'll be allowed to open operate as normal.
Before I do open it to questions, is there anything else you want to say in support of your application? This is your opportunity to convince us why we should allow you to...
Yeah, I mean, I've put in the application for 8am, that was probably a mistake. It's just to cover our bounce, doesn't mean we open at 8am. The thing about the beer engine is it's, touch wood, never had any problems. It welcomes away fans, you know, regularly. And what we wanted to do was, we have a set amount of fans who come in there, we'd never have any trouble. I wanted to cook them a nice breakfast, only allow people with tickets to the game, home tickets to the game and have two bouncers on the door, not promote it on social media, just tell the people who come in usually to let them come in and have somewhere to drink before the match. It doesn't have to be at 8am, it could even go to 11am. But the fact that we open at 12 and the kickoff's at half 12, then I might as well just not open until after the game. You know, business is hard at the moment and it's a great opportunity. I know there's the rivalry side, but also there's the other side of Sheffield United playing Sheffield Wednesday after five and a half years and people want to celebrate that. And I think if you're allowing other places to open and drink, you know, not that I want to see other people in, you know, put out of business, but there should be a blanket ban on the sale of alcohol because people can go to supermarkets and buy alcohol. People can go to the premises that are allowed to open and buy alcohol. And I understand that it's harder to police, I do, I understand that. But like I say, if we have two bouncers on the door and we only allow a certain amount of people in, I'm sure that it'll be fine. The thing is, is depending on the outcome of the game, so what the result is, that, you know, for an example, if Sheffield United win 5-0, then that's going to be hard to police. You know, we might, I'd be happy to shut our doors if there's troubles afterwards, we'll happen to shut it. There's less likely to be trouble before, it's more going to be on what the outcome of the result of the game is. Because then we're allowed to open till half 11 on a Sunday night due to our normal licence. So it depends how many people are celebrating afterwards, that's going to be also interesting. So if we're allowed to open for that, then I just think we should be allowed to open just before. I appreciate 8am was a little bit unrealistic, but it's just to cover our ends for when we could just open at 10 or we could open at 11, just to allow people to have a drink before the game. That would be my argument, but I also do see the other side of it. Like, you know, it's just from a business point of view. Like the gentleman here says, it's nothing personal. It's nothing personal against the police. I understand that they've got a job to do and it's going to be a tough day to police. But also I'm a businessman that has to make money and it's an opportunity to take a good amount of money before the game. And also, these fans come all year round and, you know, where are they going to go and drink instead? That's it.
Well, thank you, that's helpful. I'll open it up to questions then now. Karen, is there anything you'd like to ask, South Yorkshire?
Thank you. It was something you've, I think you've mentioned it, so I was just going to ask if you had any door staff and you've mentioned that you said two. And then I noticed the premises allowed up to 150. And I was just thinking, two people, 150, that seems, if things kick off, is that a reasonable number?
I'm happy to take more, but there's just one entrance to the pub at the front. So, I mean, just to give you an example, the last time we did play Sheffield Wednesday, some fans got in and they were escorted straight out because they got in because we're allowed to open early. They got in early and they were escorted straight out by the door staff and there were no further problems. But I'm, you know, obviously I've got to balance up what the cost is for how much we'll take. But the company I use, I'm happy to use three door staff. So I'd have two on the door and one inside the premise. But there is only one entrance.
Yes. So one thing, it was raised about damage to premises. So is this, is this something that happens on a regular basis during derby matches, say, or just occasionally?
Dealing with the derby matches only, as I said, the last couple of derby fixtures unfortunately have led to damage of public houses. One of them was pre-match, one of them was post-match. And that's just off the top of my head without going through anything. And it wasn't insignificant damage. It led, the one at the Bramall Lane fixture led to police resources having to forcibly remove people from the pub because we had Sheffield Wednesday fans in the wrong pub. The pumps were turned off, the building itself was damaged and it cost considerable amount to put right afterwards. The issue that you have, which hasn't really been touched on here, and dealing with the SIA licences and the bouncers, if you will, because the football event is running, that will lead to quite a large draw on the stewarding and SIA available people within the football ground. There are only limited number of stewarding companies, SIA's available. A lot of those will be working within the football ground. You then have them spread throughout the rest of the city in exactly the same manner that the police are spread. So whilst, I understand what you're saying about having two SIA and looking to have more, it may be that it's found to be difficult to find more. And in respect of other issues that was just raised there, the wrong fans in the wrong pub and being kicked out is probably going to be more likely if there are less pubs open.
TENS or no TENS on this day and question? Would you be intending to, you know, subject to United not winning 5-0, which would be the dream obviously, would you be intending to stay open your normal hours? And what sort of additional business would you expect to get during those hours?
Window currently open Sundays. I mean, it's an issue that it was moved to Sunday. I thought it was the, I thought it was Sky TV that moved it because obviously they want the big money. But it is what it is. But we'd expect to do a fair amount of money on that day because we're not usually open. So we used to open and do Sunday dinners, but the business just isn't there. So we'd expect to do a significant amount of money on that day, just opening till maybe 5, 6 at night. It depends, it really depends on what the result is. People come to drown their sorrows, as I found out when we were in the Premier League last year. But people also celebrate, as I found out this year. So it's good to be open. But I will say at this point that if there is sign of trouble, I am happy to close the doors. But we don't intend to. The only reason I said about the Wednesday fans being kicked out before is because they got there before the bouncer did and as soon as the bouncer got there, we kicked them out. So we'll be, if we are allowed to open anyway, we will be, we'll only be allowing people with Sheffield United home tickets to come through the door. But this particular venue has a certain amount of people who come to it, you know. I know everyone who comes in, I say hello to everyone who walk around. So we're just trying to look after those people. So you can even limit the amount of people that come in to 100. I mean, we don't have 150 and that's, it's like at capacity there. So what I'm trying to say is that we have a relationship, the venue has a relationship with people who attend the football game. It's the same conversations, it's the same people sit in the same places. So I just really, they, you know, been in touch, asking what the deal is. And I've had to tell them at the moment that we're not open. So as it stands, I've told them that it's been rejected, I haven't told them about the appeal. We don't, we're quite neutral when we put things on social media. So we wouldn't intend to announce that, hey, you know, we're open at 9am if we are allowed to open, because that's a red rag to a bull. So all we'd do is at the next home game, which I think is this Saturday, is say, you know, if you come down, you'll be able to get in if we are allowed to open. And I totally understand if we're not. I just, if there was an opportunity to put our case across. It's more to do with, like I said before, other venues being allowed to open. If it had been a blanket ban, I can't argue with it. But I can't afford to put, I can't afford to open at 9am and put staff on serving alcohol. Whereas there's a venue that's less, about five minutes' walk around the corner, that won't be allowed to open and will be absolutely rammed. And I presume that the police will be nearby that. So last time that there's been problems there, I've seen them parked in Waitrose Car Park, which is literally across the road from the Beer Engine pub. So I'm not asking them to police us especially, but I'm just saying that there will be a presumed police force in the area because that other pub is open.
Thank you. And you say you've run this premises for nine years now and presumably both Saturdays or every other Saturday, you've got predominantly a football crowd in there. You said it's been problem free. How have you managed to keep that problem free? Because there are certainly going to be issues in and around a football ground.
Well, touch wood, but like, they referred to the Delaney's issue with Birmingham. I mean, Birmingham smashed up the whole of London Road and it was before that we had the premises. So there's a certain thing about how we run this pub. There's no gambling machines, no TVs, you know, there's no distractions, no pool tables. So when you come there on a normal night, it's for alcohol and food and good conversation. We've also got, we're a craft beer bar, you know, and our price is a certain level that the discerning drinker comes in there. So what then happens is, is we get less of the trouble. I mean, one, I'll give you an example. One time, the police kettled the BBC in there after a Millwall game. So we had 50 members of the BBC in there who all kind of behaved themselves. I mean, it was pretty scary. But people just behave if, I mean, I can't say it will happen. I mean, I don't know what happened, I can't see the future. But we've allowed away fans in. I've had Delia Smith sat at table nine ordering tapas before, you know. But we're just welcoming to everyone and there's a certain attitude there. I can't guarantee that there won't be problems because I don't know. And like, it is a fixture that's got, you know, the biggest history in the city. But we, I don't know, have I been lucky that we've never had problems? It's just that we are, we're a certain way with people, polite to everyone. You know, everyone's welcome, away fans get in touch. If you go on the internet, you'll see that we're recommended for away fans to come to and they mingle with the other people. They don't come in afterwards, but they're coming before. And there's, it's a certain clientele that drink in there, that there doesn't seem to be these problems. I can't tell you what that is. So.
Thank you. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask the applicants?
Thank you. Have you opened during a derby previously? I'm not sure how long you've been there for, sorry.
So nine years. So we have done it before, but, you know, the memory fails me. I think there was probably early kickoff's again. So we have opened, so yeah, nine years. So I think there would have been four, maybe four, four or five, four home games? Two.
Two.
Thank you. Have you not played in the cup or anything? Okay, yeah.
And did you have any problems during those?
Like I said, there was just a few fans that turned up early and they were escorted straight out. All they did was come in and put up a Wednesday flag in the beer garden and then they were taken straight out.
Thank you. And just finally, obviously having heard from the police today, you've said that 8am might have been a little bit ambitious and that you'd sort of look at later. Had you had the conversations with the police prior to the meeting, would you have amended those hours? Or do you think you'd have still thought, I'll go for eight and see what happens?
The reason why we put eight, so basically, as you know, from licensing, the TENS is just to cover the sale of alcohol at any point. So it doesn't mean we have to open at eight. It just, it just covers our basis that if we open, it's like if there's people outside. We wouldn't intend to open before nine, probably not till 10 o'clock. The thing is, the conversation with the police, and I understand this, is, was literally just a phone call that said, we're not allowing, you can appeal. That was the end of the conversation. And just add to this as well, to all of you, like, it seems like from a business point of view, I understand the importance of that day. I question why it was moved as well to the Sunday for, you know, with the Remembrance Day. I don't understand the crossover of that. So that's just, that's a personal view on that. Yeah, and that's it.
Do you think, had you known the extent of the concerns and everything that the police are having to put in place from sort of across the city, across the country, would you have reconsidered submitting the ten if you'd sort of known that previously or?
I wouldn't have submitted the ten if it was a blanket ban. But like I keep going back to certain places being allowed to open just makes me question, well, if they're allowed to open, why can't I open? Just based on their premise, you know, that the times are allowed to open. But I do understand it. Like everyone keeps saying, it's not personal. I understand it's not personal. It's just business. You know, I've got rent to pay and I've got staff to employ. And when we have a home game, it bumps up revenue sometimes by 50% for the week. And that is significant when paying your gas, your electric, your staff, your rent and everything else, your business rates and everything else like that. So, you know, as the gentleman said, it might be a couple of grand that you lose. as the gentleman said, it might be a couple of grand that you lose in revenue, but when you break that down, that pays my rent for the month. Just from that take before, before the match.
I appreciate that, and I think the committee is certainly alive to the struggles of the licence trade at the minute, it's, it's pretty shocking what's happening, so we do appreciate that. Thank you, that's all from me.
Does South Yorkshire Police have any questions for the applicants?
Just, just a few, thank you very much, sir. Mr Harrington, just tell us how you, you think this application promotes the licensing objectives here, particularly in relation to crime and disorder and public safety.
What do you mean promotes?
Well, your, your application has to promote the licensing objectives, and the two that we're concerned with here, one is prevention of crime and disorder and the other one is, is around ensuring public safety. So at the moment you have a licence which entitles you to open at, at certain hours. You want an extension, so to grant that extension, this committee needs to be satisfied that the licensing, the licensing objectives, which I've mentioned, the two are, are promoted, are still being promoted and ensured and guaranteed, so how do you see that happening?
Well, I can't, I don't really know how to answer that, like, all, all I'm trying to say is, can I open early and trade some money to pay, you know, to trade as a business, I don't know how it's not promoting or against the other way. I've, I've offered to staff it with three door staff and everything else, so, I don't quite know what you're asking me to, to answer there, it's obviously not promoting it, but that's why you have a ten in place.
Shouldn't we also know what your actual plans are in terms of opening hours and the number of people that you're likely to admit to the premises?
Yeah, so the intention before we realised it would be an objection was to have a full English breakfast available for people to purchase or bacon butties, as we usually do on a match day when there's an open, early opening. And then the option for people to buy a few pints before the game. Obviously we're allowed a hundred and fifty people, I don't think I've ever had a hundred and fifty people in there at one time. I'm happy to limit it to a hundred, happy to limit it to fifty, but then obviously you have to balance it against how much you're paying the bus, bar staff and how many staff you have on to then service that.
But you've, you've, you've told us earlier that you, you've put in eight AM as being the time that you'd like to be permitted to serve alcohol from, but you, is that right?
No, I've just clarified that we don't intend to open at eight, basically when you put a ten.
You haven't actually told us when you will, you, you said, I think you said earlier, forgive me, you said earlier, well, it might be nine o'clock, maybe ten o'clock. But you, you've not actually got something concrete here that you're promoting, proposing to them?
Because I haven't got anything concrete, because it's been objected to at the moment, so I'm willing to negotiate. But if, I mean, if they turn, if the committee did turn it around, then I could open at eight o'clock, because that's the time that I applied for. But I think it's unrealistic to open at eight o'clock. So if you want me to give you a plan, I will, like, we'll open at nine and we'll do breakfast and we'll allow a certain amount of people in, but I'm happy to open at ten, I'm happy to open at eleven, but any time after that, then there's not much point.
And how do you intend to guarantee that, for example, it would only be United fans that come in? I mean, what, what, what would be your process for ensuring that the?
Well, you need a ticket to go to the games, so, you've got to produce, you've got to produce a home season ticket or a ticket for the game, you're not allowed.
Okay, so in, in the application, I mean, your, your measures for in introducing controls at the door, as it were, to guarantee that those who are admitted, if, if there is an extension. We, we've got no detail about that, do you agree with that in terms of how you propose to do that? So that, so that there are some control measures?
Yeah, so I'd be on the door with the two door staff.
Right.
So I wouldn't be policing it, because I'm not a trained door staff, but, you know, having been there nine years, I'm aware of most of the fans that come in that day and I'm aware of whether they're locals or, you know, regulars or not. But I'd still have to produce a home season ticket.
Do, do, do you think there are risks around this particular fixture?
There's risks about running a pub in general.
But, but on this particular day, in this particular fixture, are, are those risks significantly heightened?
Well, yeah, but, you know, what happens when we play Barnsley? What happens when we play Leeds? When we played Leeds, we played them on a Friday night and I had police, police wrestling with my bin from next door that's outside with the fans trying to stop them from coming down the corridor. I mean, there's always risks when there's football involved.
But this is different, isn't it, because this has the highest rating for football policing?
I would say, yeah, for you guys, because they're both in the same city, but if they play in Leeds, it's just as significant in rivalry.
Now, you said also, you mentioned something about not advertising the, any early opening on, on social media, is that right?
Yeah.
So if you're wanting to make money out of the opportunity that's before you, then, then surely you want to advertise it in the widest possible way, don't you?
No, because it'll bring too many people, so as I said before, the next home game, I'll tell certain crowds that will, if we're allowed to open, we'll be open. They'll have to come down with a ticket to get in and then it will probably spread by word, but, I mean, it's a red rag to a bull to say, hey guys, we're open at nine o'clock on Remembrance Sunday.
Right, so what, what do you mean red rag to a bull? What, what, what particular risk or concern are you directing that comment at?
Because no one else is allowed to open, then there's limited places people can drink. So then people who don't usually drink in the Beer Engine will then come down to it if they see it on social media.
Right, right.
And I could, we could make it a private event, tickets only, where we issue our own tickets to people.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you then, it's back over to you to sum up your case for us.
Well, also, in, in summing up, I'd like you to accept first of all that the South Yorkshire Police's response to this is an entirely proportionate one, in, in the sense that although they've said that they're, they're going to adopt a blanket objection to any ten's application, it's with good reason, so accepting of course that licensed premises will operate within their existing licence, we know for example that there is a, as we've heard, a pub very close to the Beer Engine which will be open from nine o'clock. They're not intending to try and restrict anything beyond what the, the existing licences already permit. So, and they have engaged with the Beer Engine here and have explained their reasons for why they are taking this stance, it's not personal, but this is all, I say, a proportionate response towards containment of a, of a sporting event which carries huge public risk in terms of the, the heritage that it carries in terms of public disorder and risks to public safety. I'd ask you to accept that this is a proper objection, because first of all, Mr Harrington, when I asked him, didn't seem to have any understanding as to why the particular licensing objectives would, would be promoted here. Because he has to at least engage with that idea beyond simply the opportunity to make money, which seems to be his primary objective here, and, and nobody would say that that is, is wrong, but over and above that, there is a requirement in my submission for him to at least put forward a case which convinces this committee that the licensing objectives are, are, are going to still be promoted if, if that, if those, if this extension is granted. And in my submission, he, he's not, he's not actually done that, because giving the opportunity to him then a few minutes ago, in my submission, his answers were that he, he hadn't really thought about it and couldn't really give an explanation as to why he thought opening from eight AM or nine AM or any later time would, would still promote that, those objectives. So in, in my submission, where we are is, we know that there will be other opportunities to drink within the city centre. But in my submission, there's no compelling case that he presents for the extension. He, he tells us about measures that he will take to restrict numbers or who is admitted to the Beer Engine on the day. He gave, in my submission, some confusing responses where he said that, for instance, advertising the event on social media would be a red rag to a bull, but equally, I think he wants to do that, he wants to maximise his profit, so there seems to be a bit of conflict about his thinking there in my submission, in terms of his approach to actually being able, able to open earlier than midday, which is when he would otherwise be entitled to open. So, sir, in, in summarising, I'm coming to a conclusion on this, I, I, I would say that this is a an opportunity for applying some containment to what is unlikely to, what is likely to be a flashpoint to clubs who have not played each other for five and a half years. It, it's going to be much anticipated within the, the rather negative groups of the fans. History, history tells us that this is going to be the biggest event in the history of the clubs in terms of their history of derbies. The past, in my submission, has to be a guide to the present here, for what is likely to happen next month in terms of crowd violence. And it's, it's a day which carries with it particular emotion because of the number of people that will be coming into the city centre to celebrate Armistice Day at about, or only an hour or so before the kickoff itself. So, sir, I'd ask you and your colleagues to give serious consideration to the objections of South Yorkshire Police and not, not grant this application. Thank you very much.
And now the applicant, you have the opportunity to sum up your application.
Thanks very much, and yeah, I mean, it, it, just to, to go back to this, it's, I did say it's about making money, because I'm a businessman, but it's also about providing a service to people who, you know, frequent the pub every match day and not seeing them without their usual place to drink. I, I do understand what the ramifications are of opening, but, you know, every, every football game, obviously not as, you know, as highly significant as this one, carries problems. You know, a lot of the time we don't even have door staff because it's a pub with a reputation for where everyone's welcome to drink. I would like the opportunity to open early, I would like the opportunity to open at ten AM, so I'm happy to change that. And I would still offer the breakfast to people beforehand. I will happily put on three door staff at a significant cost. But I will say, I understand if it doesn't go through, because I understand the concerns of the South Yorkshire Police about policing that event. It's, as I keep going back to, if everywhere had been shut, in the whole city, then that's fair enough, because it's a blanket ban and that goes against what, you know, shows what their concerns are. But the fact that some places are allowed to open means, you know, people are allowed to drink before the game in areas that, in, in pubs that are allowed to open normal, having normal licensed hours is something I can't afford to do, to open at nine AM, so if I had had a licence to open nine AM, I'd have been able to open for that game. And that's basically it, so that's in conclusion.
The options then, please, Jane.
Yes, thank you, I was just, there were too many microphones on, that's okay. Okay, so the options open to the committee this morning are to acknowledge the temporary event notice, allowing the event to go ahead on the proposed date as per the notice submitted, to acknowledge the temporary event notice, allowing the event to go ahead on the proposed date with extra conditions, or to give the premises user a counter notice if it is considered appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you, Jane. Could I ask you to now leave the room with the licensing office, so while we take some legal advice and as soon as we've come to a decision, we'll invite you back in and tell you what that is. You've got your time and your presentations this morning, the decision of the licensing subcommittee is to refuse the application or serve a counter notice, to use the, the language there. And that's not because we don't think you're a responsible landlord who runs a pub, a good pub, and it's not because we, we know how, how you're struggling, and this is an ideal business opportunity, but we just think the potential risk of, of crime and disorder and, and violence on, on this day are really, really high and anything we can do to, to help the police and others manage that, we, we have to do. I would also suggest, and I don't think it would have helped in this case, but if you're planning something similar in, in the future, if you could have that conversation with the, the police licensing people, because, you know, you've come this morning and given a different reflection on the tens as to what it looked like on paper, you know, looking eight o'clock for four hours drinking as opposed to we'll serve a breakfast, have three staff, you know, have that conversation before and then we, we might not end up in this room, because there won't be any objections to it, though I, I think they would have objected twenty, and we'll object twenty tens for, for this particular day. So that, that's the decision of the licensing subcommittee this morning, are there any grounds for appeal, Sam, that you need to?
Oh, hallways, Chair. Yes, so you'll receive a notice, as the Chair said, the counter notice following the hearing, setting out everything that was discussed and how the committee came to that decision. So should you wish to, I appreciate with the temporary event notice, it doesn't massively help because of how soon the event is, but you do have twenty-one days in which to lodge that appeal at the Magistrates Court. And then basically just certain members have and consider the notice and anything else to take into account, but that's completely up to you, but I appreciate everyone coming today, I'm sure you're all very, very busy, so thank you very much for that.